I guess we go ahead and get started. We have two council members. Yeah, on on zoom up there. And to here and. I think we're expecting Richard to read. No, okay. Alright, so first up is our council agenda review. Let's just go ahead and start with that. Anybody have any issue with the minutes? Then we'll have our normal reports or no presentations this time. Ma'am. Oh, right. Right. No, but let's go ahead and talk about the agenda because that'll be the first thing that we do. That this is the conflict on the schedule thing, right?
No, 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 it's the the speed detection.
Oh, right.
Stuff.
Because we're going to act on this.
This, yeah, the the schedule is on is on the agenda.
Right, sorry. What? That'll be oh, five, four?
Yes.
Speed detection at school. Okay, so we'll be adding one item on that based on a report that we'll be hearing from the chief. Both today and in the council meeting. Then we'll have our staff reports and we'll go on to. One item of unfinished business, which was twenty three dash oh, three oh, which was the amendment of the charter. On the. Boards. Issue. No action, so that's a first read, right? We're we're re-first reading that one, okay? Any any other conversation about that one? It seems like we've talked about that a lot. Next up is twenty three dash oh, four, four. Which is a village rezoning. Application, Mike, you want to walk us through that?
That's right. Happy to. Mayor and council, this is a request from Harrison Merrill to rezone five hundred and twenty six acres from RL to VL. It would be the first village zoned by the city. There's friendship village, which we have a portion of was zoned by Fulton County before we became a city. And that's got VL zoning in in. In the city. It is, as I say, five hundred and twenty six acres. At all four corners of Cochran Mill Road and South Fulton Parkway. Extends up to Cochran Mill Park to the north and down to the Palmetto property. In the south, it's where Palmetto kind of cuts into the city. On the east side is Wilkerson Mill Gardens and Bear Creek Mixed Juice Hamlet. Which is the former dead subdivision that was recently rezoned to Mixed Juice Hamlet. And they'll be getting a. Land and service permit from us pretty quickly for their their first phase. And then on the west side is Boot Cart Property. Divided by a creek on on that side. The proposal is for a a village, which includes, of course, a mix of uses. It requires the purchase of TDRs to get enough residential density. The applicant has proposed two thousand units. Residential units, which would mean they would have to purchase. Fourteen hundred, what fourteen seventy five, I guess. TRs roughly. And of course, a variety of non-residential uses. They propose a hotel for which they're not seeking a special use permit yet. Possibly a hospital and corporate campuses. They're they're aiming high on the the users that they're hoping to get in there also potential university resort. Those sorts of things, so quite a little bit that they're putting in there. Council members are familiar with the the approach that the applicant had taken. With knitting the village across Cochran Mill Road and request for a buffer variance. The applicant has amended their application to withdraw the buffer variance. So there's no variance request. They are showing on their plan all the buffers the city asked for, which is one hundred and fifty feet around the outside. And along Cochran Mill Road and three hundred feet along the Parkway. So it would be a large. Probably multi-decade project to be to be built out. And I think we have the applicant. Here, we have the applicant here, he'd be happy to. Happy to answer any questions about the about the project. The land in Palmetto to the south is also owned by the applicant. It is the Merrill Merrill Village, also same 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 name. It went through its own independent DRI process and. Will be under development also shortly, mostly residential with a kind of commercial core. That connects to Cochran Mill Road, but that again is all in the city of Palmetto. And oh, the I guess the other point is the site is also a location that's been identified for a multi-use trail segment. In the original path trail plan and actually. It's a programmed trail in the the regional tip. So. Whenever we're ready, move forward and somebody provides the match that could. That could that could happen. But if you have any questions for the applicant, I I hope that you'll take advantage of this opportunity to find out what is. What he has in mind.
I have questions. Tom, can you hear me?
Yeah, just one sec, Lori, we've got. Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you.
Can can you hear him back there?
I I think it is, it's going to be probably between fifteen and thirty years. It's going to be. It's we we are including a lot of things that we were planning. For Foxhole like hospital health facilities. University of universities, where we'll put in a number of universities who provide the training. Or the companies that locate. In Chateau G Hills all the way up to the airport. The hotel will obviously be attractive because it's close to the park. It'll also provide for the companies that locate there and and. And we're looking at national and international companies who come in and build. Significant. Infrastructure in terms of the campuses, high wages. We've seen a lot of those at Foxhole, probably for the first time ever on the south side, other than the airport. They've actually come in the KPMG four hundred million dollar campus looked at us. The LPG International Headquarters, which a lot of people don't know, the PGA. International Headquarters, we were selected by Georgia as one of the sites to. Show to them Salesforce, which is one of the largest software companies in the world. So we've gotten a lot of looks, but this is actually closer to. The airport. It's right on. South Fulton Parkway and Cochran Mills, appropriate place for village because. Basically, the traffic comes on and off of South Fulton Parkway.
Okay, yeah, thank you, sir.
A long answer to a short question.
No, no, that just was exactly what I was asking for. Have an overview there and appreciate it, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Laurie, I think you had a question?
Uh, yes, will this project be done in phases?
I'm sorry, Laurie, what?
Will this?
Did you she asked if it will be done in phases?
Oh, yes, the project will definitely be done in phases. One of the reasons that we're coming in now, Laurie, for the project, I think we went over this when we. When we met here at the. At City Hall. Is that. I want to market it. I've worked very diligently with the Georgia Aratropolis Carter Concept. And. I'm excited about marketing and I probably have a limited amount of time to do that, so, yeah, it'll be in phases. It'll largely be driven by the tenants, it's like the tenants who have. Come to us like Salesforce, KPMG. Deloitte looked at having a second. Huge training center. At Foxhole, similar to what they have in Dallas, they decided instead double the one in Dallas. So as I say, through the Department of Economic Development, through Georgia Power. Through the Metropolitan Atlanta Chamber of Commerce. We've gotten a lot of looks at Foxhole, we think they'll find this equally desirable, even though we don't have a resort here at this time.
So I have a question for Mike.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, so um. Mike, in the earlier applications on on the maps, we saw quite a bit more detail. And then the last map I saw, a lot of that detail was gone. So as the next phases come in, will council get to see those details again? Or are we? What are we being asked to approve this time, just to entitle it as a village or?
Right. What the applicant is proposing is the the rezoning, the entitlement, so that he would be able to then. Market the property and there are some things that he would be able to do based on the approved concept plan. If if the plan is approved as as submitted. As long as it fits within the zoning, the things that we control include the the street types and streetscapes and building heights and the ratio of the uses and. You know, of course, all the buffers and and open space. So anything that fits within those parameters and is conceptually. Consistent with the the approved concept plan would then. Would then be able to go forward unless they were somehow conditioned to some other level of approval.
And and Mike, did you? Did you say you had a date in mind when the DRI application would be finalized?
Be, yes, I think October ninth is when we'll get the last, the notice of decision from from Greta. They were just on a call about that actually today and they said as long as they've heard from. G dot, and that's the first time I had heard that caveat added. I'd been given that data a while back, so I certainly expect to have it on the ninth, but all of a sudden there's this little question mark thrown in. We have, we'll certainly have a a draft of it ready to go for the planning commission hearing. And I do expect on the ninth that I'll have him be able to get that out to the planning commission hearing as a planning commission as well for their for their hearing, so it should be the ninth.
And will that include the traffic study?
The traffic study is done and submitted. It's just the the recommendations or the the decision from Greta and ARC that we don't have.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mike, this is Ruby. What about having a conversation with the community? Take place or how would that? You know, be done.
Right, are are you looking for conversation with the community before before next month's vote?
Well, next month, October the ninth might be too quick, but we definitely need to make sure that the community have a voice.
Okay, so the the October ninth would be the notice of decision from Greta, the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. The Planning Commission Hearing is on the twelfth and then November ninth is the actual. The next, the city council hearing and presumably a vote. And. So it's it's a little over over a month away if 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 you all want to request hearings that are, I'm sorry, public meetings, we could talk.
We would love to have one, Ruby, or as many as you'd like. We had a zoning where we had just up the street at Cedar Grove where we. Met with the neighbors at least four times and probably. Four times that with the city council person, so. We love those meetings, the interchange, that a lot, a lot of folks who I think will, once they understand this, this is already, I think, on the general plan for village. And, you know, we'd love to let them know what we plan, we've used. TSW. Which y'all are familiar with, Tom Walsh's firm, we have Ryan Snodgrass here today. We spent about a year and a half on the planning alone, almost, Ryan, almost two years now. So we're happy to share that with community, answer any questions. As I say, we've taken away all the variances because it seemed to be objections with variances on the buffers. As you know. So. We're happy to interact anytime, as many meetings as the community might like.
So let's work to get that set up right away. I mean, sometimes developers do those, sometimes they don't. It's not a requirement in our zoning, although we're going to be talking about that later as well.
That's right, so so, yeah, we'll be happy to do that. And if we can, I mean, the planning commission. Hearing is actually two weeks from from tonight, I don't know if we could squeeze something in and get people in then, but or ahead of the planning commission hearing. Certainly, I would expect before November ninth, but we can even try before the planning commission hearing if you're available.
We have to do it this week, next week. Whatever works from a from a city perspective.
I think it's also important that we have the context, right? We have a plan, a a kind of bubble plan for what they're talking about. You also mentioned the Palmetto development that's already approved by Palmetto, which goes from kind of old Rico, Atlanta. Rico Tatum over to Phillips Road. Showing this in that context, because I think it's important too for people to realize what's already coming and where this sits relative to that, where it sits relative to people. People where people live. That sort of thing, just think that that would be a useful.
I've got copies if you wanted to hand them.
Perfect, that thing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ruby.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There goes Robbie. Yeah, no, before you leave the stage. Um, I wanted to ask just a little bit about more about the that. The idea on the phase one near the park, what you sort of landed on, I'm just glancing at it now, it looks like Holmes Park. Just kind of refresh my memory.
I don't know how many of you have been down to thirty A. Which would be seaside watercolor. In that area, but they have something called a hub that we fall in love with. And it's basically a. I call it an embryonic commercial development for the. For the community. And it's a, it's a public space surrounded by. Maybe seven different places to eat. Small places. It's got a stage, it's got an open space. It's where the community comes, there's entertainment. Several nights a week. Also, you have some entrepreneurial retailers there who start off in very small spaces. And if they're successful, and they have been at the hub, then they build larger spaces. So it's just a neat. Community-based. Commercial slash residential development next to the park. And we also are proposing. After discussion with the city preliminarily. It'd be a second entrance to the park, there'll be parking there. They go through the hub and then they can go into the park from the hub. It's a place where they can start if they're bicycling, if they're going through as a family, if they're pedestrians. It's just exciting. Very energetic type development that we decided we would like to have as our first phase. Again, subject to city approval.
No, I mean, I think we've had parking, that becomes a big issue over there and we've had it, right? So we've had have the tower area, but. I think that's still going to be on our radar. At least mine. And then the city-owned parcel, can you describe that a little bit more?
It's a cemetery.
Like both sides of the road, did I?
It's on the right, I can't see it back there, another cemetery back.
It is a cemetery, yeah, there was an old church there.
Yeah, so.
Got it.
That's just been, it's just an out parcel.
They've kind of built a park around it, but they're not doing anything on the parcel. And I don't think that there's anything actually on the west side of the road, it's just the parcel extends that way. The cemetery is all.
Really anything on the east or the west side, they really anything anywhere right now, but the neat thing is it's a blank canvas. So we can do something creative, we can do something that. Where we're not having to build around what exists, which is great from a development standpoint, I think it'll be great from a village standpoint.
The whole parcel, yeah, right. Any other questions about that? All right, let's let's get that, I mean, it's a great idea, let's get that meeting scheduled. Those meetings.
Do you all have preferences about sooner rather than later? Would you like me to? I think either next Thursday or the following Tuesday would be the days to shoot for if we're doing it.
Again, I don't think I don't think there's a. There's not a huge rush, right? So we can, we can let the meetings happen, but yeah, sooner is better than later.
Okay, okay.
And we'd suggest to be here, it could be. At Foxhole. So that the people who come could understand the quality of the development that we're in, I think Foxhole. Indicates that and we've had, when we did our Cedar Grove zoning. We had a couple of meetings at Foxhole and. It's kind of an eye-opener with the kind of quality growth that is possible in the South Fulton Parkway area.
Okay, so we'll, Rob, we'll we'll be able to put that on the website. When it's scheduled. Okay, so we'll make sure we put that on the website, everyone check the website if you're looking for it. And these will be developer or applicant-driven meetings, so they can happen anywhere. We're happy to host them here if you would like, but Foxhole is certainly fine as well, so.
Really, whatever the community would like. So we're we're flexible, we'd just be happy to host it there if you'd like.
We'll push that out to everybody, you know, hears about it, right?
Also, I did step out, I didn't hear a possible date, we've got early voting. So they'll be delivering equipment on the thirteenth. So this room's not going to be available after the third.
After the planning commission meeting, we can't use this.
Thirteenth of October, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Again, I mean, you know, we can work around the logistics, let's just hang it down. Anything else, anybody else, anything else you want to say?
No, just thank you.
All right. All right, next up would be. Twenty three dash oh, four, five, which is another zoning amendment for a mixed use hamlet up on Cochran Mill.
That's right, this is the the north end of the city, two hundred and sixty five acres between Cochran Mill Road, Creel Road and Cedar Grove Road. It has frontages on each, although only a little bit on. Cedar Grove Road. There's also a request for a special use permit to allow a hotel within the Mixed Juice Hamlet District that would be approved. These are on two separate ordinances in in the package, so. You can vote for them together or 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 separately, I would assume, which is hold a single public hearing probably for the for the proposal. So two hundred and sixty five acre mixed use hamlet. And the proposal is for, well, as I say, the hotel and just a small amount of of retail, about fourteen thousand square feet. The first phase would enter off of Cochran Mill Road. With just some residential property and then expanding into what would be the kind of the core of the district, which has some mixed use buildings and a plaza. And a a community center and. And then other community building, community activity building. And then extending to the south in the early phases with more residential and some to the north. And then again, in later phases, across a creek to the west and extending up up toward toward Cedar Grove Road. The plan has all our one hundred and fifty foot buffers all the way around where it meets the RL District. We don't require buffers where it isn't. The city, because that's not RL District, but they have provided buffers there, fifty foot buffers where where they meet City of South Fulton property. And they meet the open space requirements, protecting. Seventy percent of the land, seventy one percent actually as open space or civic space. So it's it's kind of right down the middle of what we we say we're looking for. They also actually are proposing a higher density than the two hundred and sixty five residential units. Purchasing two hundred and sixty five TDRs also, which is what the zoning allows. So that's a a nice addition for the city to get the 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 TDRs out of a hamlet proposal, which which we haven't gotten. So we have on the table a couple of opportunities to do some preservation of of land in the rural district, which is. Which is nice. So again, we have the applicant here, Lauren Gerich. And if you have.
I see several other unfamiliar faces back there, so I assume Lauren has a team with her.
So I hope if you have questions, you'll. Go ahead and ask it.
Do if if. I mean, we haven't seen them before, do they want, you want to? Anybody want to come up and say something or?
Good evening, I'm Ryan Snodgrass with TSW, I was the land planner for Lauren on this project. We've been working with Lauren for about. Probably about two years as well on this project through different iterations to refine the program and the concept to get it just where we believe is appropriate for the land.
Thanks, Ryan. I'm Ellen Smith with Parker Poe, zoning and land use attorney, and I have not had the pleasure of doing this for two years now, but maybe a little about a year now. So we welcome the opportunity, it's nice to meet you.
Fantastic, now, I know I've I've heard too that you guys are planning on doing some. A town hall meeting of some sort, maybe you're, yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
No, absolutely, only only for the purpose of those on Zoom so that you can hear, hopefully. Yes, so individual outreach with neighbors will start next week with Lauren and her property manager. And then the week of the sixteenth. Meeting with those stakeholders who receive notices, so everybody within three hundred. Feet of the two hundred and sixty five acre parcel. And until just a few minutes ago, when we heard early voting machines were going to be here, we were going to propose holding it here. But I think we're flexible on location, so.
We have the Cedar Grove Community Center too, that's up that way, that might be a good place to do it.
So.
And and just. You you probably have questions, but I do want to clarify something, just sorry.
I I was just gonna, I left, I mentioned the hotel, I think there's been a little chatter about the size of the hotel, what's proposed is a one hundred key, one hundred room boutique hotel, not a large, anyway.
Well, and and some of the chatter too makes it sound like a special use permit is like a variance or something like that, it's not that at all. Hotels have been allowed in hamlets in the hamlet zoning since the overlay, since two thousand and four, that's always been one of the allowed uses in a hamlet. The the reason that we've added special use permits to those, it gives us another opportunity to look at how it lays in the land and the impacts it has. And another opportunity for us to put special conditions on things like public safety access and traffic requirements and all of that. So again, I just want to be clear that that's not, it's not like a variance, it's not at all, it's just a. An extra layer of regulation that the city has put on that process. So again, if anybody has questions, we've got. People here from the team, there will be. Obviously, more interaction on it, but.
Tom, I have a question.
Laurie, go ahead.
Okay, um. And it's probably for Mike. So Mike, I understood in a. Station we approved earlier that was on a state road, that if the traffic study. The state would take care of that. This application. And on Cochran Mill Road, a roads we own and maintain. If the trap, if the traffic study comes back for this application or additional application, so a general question. Does that, does that, should that impact? Our conditions or, you know, if the city's going to have to pay for? The road extensions, how does that work?
Yeah, that's, so the, so I should have mentioned for both these projects, both these are going through the DRI process, which had pretty robust traffic study requirements. And. We'll be getting, I think this project is two or three days behind the other one in. In in that process, so so. We'll also be getting results from that just before, I think it's the day before the planning commission meeting, it takes two days, I think we expected the eleventh from Greta. So yes, we'll get traffic study results, there will be recommendations from ARC and Greta. And I would expect us to consider those, incorporate those in conditions as as appropriate. I would expect to do that with input of councilmen.
And Laurie, to be very specific, in the the way that it worked on ones previously where there were. State routes. You look at the state route planning that G dot is doing and what they're planning on doing already. And there are. Sometimes in the conditions, places where a particular developer might have to pay for a part of that upgrade when it happens, the the upgrade that G dot's planning on doing. There are other things that are immediate requirements, turn lanes and things like that. For example, on Campbellton Redwine Road for the movie studio, things that they have to do right away. And those are all in our conditions specifically saying, you know, how these things happen and when, so the same thing would be happening here.
Thanks, Tom.
Ruby, you're online, I just want to make sure I don't miss. Miss the folks that aren't in the room.
And could she mention the timeline again, Tom? I think I thought she initially said like in the next year, they might start construction or?
I think, I mean, you know, we're we're in that phase right now of approval, right? Assuming approval happens in the normal kind of course, when do you think?
Probably the earliest twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five and and you're building in phases as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
You're saying that would be the start would be twenty twenty five?
Correct.
Yep.
Is the, is the hotel part of phase one? I, I was looking on the map and I couldn't identify the location. Okay.
Three or four. Let me, let me confirm.
Maybe I'm just missing. I just was seeing where.
It's shown on the D R I map. Um, there's a bulb, bubble that sticks to the north. It's, it's not identified on the zoning, on the zoning map, but the D R I map has a hotel label.
These three.
And in the meantime, if you know the answer to the question.
It's a hotel.
Third phase, fourth phase.
Okay, I see.
It is the third.
It's in the.
Phase three, okay. Yeah, I, I mean, one of the things I noted, I noted the large contiguous open space in the plan, which I, I, I caught my attention, which is I, I, I like that. And then the um, the park area. Um, I was just looking at the design. I felt like incorporated a lot of green space. I don't know. Is it like seventy percent or what number did it be all landed on?
Correct, seventy-one percent. And that's um,
We, I think we can hear you, so.
Um, yeah, we're at seventy-one percent. So that's sixty-six percent of the uh, open space, five percent civic. Um, and we are really proud about the, the mass of land that we're able to preserve as, as a forest. So that, that forest is around seventy-four acres. Um, and, and we're looking, and that's in, in addition to that, we have twenty-two acres of within the blue lines and then sixty acres.
And with the development rights, there's another two hundred and fifty acres externally. They're going to get protected too because of this just huge.
And we, we really do expect our open space percentage to go up. Because as the future phases are refined, we're really focused on phase one and two right now, refining that. And so as we start to look closer at those future phases, we see opportunities for pocket parks and, you know, gathering spaces. So those will be added and only add to our.
Fantastic.
And a lot of that, it looks like is uh, down Cochrane Mill Road. Is that right? What I'm looking at? Yeah. So there's a lot of green space um, adjacent.
There's, there's a stream that pretty much runs parallel with Cochrane Mill. So um, can't say that's by design, but it, it does, it is a, a nice feature to have that extra buffer there.
Right? Any other questions for you? You know, anybody else online? Uh, appreciate it. We'll look forward to hearing, you know, feedback uh, from the meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Lori, did you have another one?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's what I heard too, but. All right. Thanks very much. Thank you, guys. Um, next up is uh, D N R, R T P grant funding uh, request. And there are two pieces of this. Uh, is that? Robbie, are you talking about that? Oh, yay. Wow, look at that. Parks Commission in the house. Come on up. And thank you. I should never ever underestimate how awesome that group is, right? Like I just setting the bar.
I'd rather use this. Okay, I'll use this one. All right. So um, yes, mayor, council, members of the public. Uh, I'm Pat Lesko. I'm on Parks Commission. I'm representing the Parks Commission. So if I say we, I mean the Parks Commission, not the city of Chad Hills. Um, so at the last work session, we presented a proposal to build a universal access trail in Riverlands Park. Um, do you want me to talk about that at all? Or do you all feel familiar?
I mean, just a quick reminder for people that maybe didn't hear it last time.
Yeah, okay. So um, we, we have a proposal to build a universal access trail in uh, Riverlands Park. And we also have the opportunity right now to apply for a recreational trails program grant, which I will call R T P for the future. Um, from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources. And so what we're doing now is working on the grant. This is a reimbursement grant eighty-twenty, which means the city does pay everything upfront and then uh, is reimbursed for eighty percent of eligible costs by the D N R. Um, the city has twelve hundred acres of parkland right now with many well-loved, well-used trails. But nary a one that meets the accessible accessibility guidelines of the Architectural Barriers Act, which is what the federal government is interested in, and they're actually funding this sort of grant through federal highway taxes. Um, so those sorts of trails are characterized by being wider, smoother with a firm surface uh, and less steep than the other trails we already have in Chad Hills. And it's desirable, not just because the, the population of Chad Hills is getting older and might be using things like wheelchairs. Um, but also it.
Really?
It takes. Um, getting children out into nature too. So um, anyway, so the Parks Commission decided that Riverlands is an ideal location because it has a relatively flat topography. Um, it has the river views, it has woodlands and meadows. And it, it has proposed as a part of our grant pollinator um, garden. And also it's distant from Cochrane Mill Park, which is quite heavily used now and very popular. So it would get people into a less densely used area. And really the icing on the cake for using Riverlands is that there will be accessible parking and accessible restroom facilities courtesy of the Trust for Public Lands. And um, a Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Grant. And the groundbreaking ceremony for that construction was held about three weeks ago. Um, so at the last work session, we asked the council um, if they were supportive of our going forward and putting work into the grant, and there was enthusiastic yes for that. And so now we're here to get these two resolutions because we need them in order to make our grant application. Um, which is due November's uh, first, yes. Okay, so those were the, are ones, one resolution is authorizing the city to apply for the grant. And the second resolution is that is committing the city to take care of the trail in the event that the grant is awarded and we build the trail.
And this is the same sort of grant that we use to do the bridge repair in Cochrane Mill Park, the R T V grant. Um, we're, we're familiar with the process. We've done that before. Uh, for people who haven't seen the map, the trail layout's pretty cool because it uses the same topography line to wind through the park in a level way, but really does wind through it in a, you know, get the view over the river and get the view of the woods and it's really cool. When, does anybody have any questions?
I had one more thing.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah.
For the purpose of the grant, we're calling this the Wheel Beautiful Riverlands Scenic Universal Access Trail. Can you guess who came up with that name? Not me.
That's, does it, does it at least turn into something nice when you put it all together? Like the, the, the front, the front letter of each of those? What's it come out to?
Oh, no, no, no.
Come on.
It's just the wheel part.
Yeah.
For wheels.
I, I get it. Boo.
The wheel grant, okay.
Wheel grant.
The wheel beautiful grant.
Perfect. That's perfect. No, and I, I was going to say that uh, we, we had a, apparently we had a couple of questions on the last one too. Robbie and Richie and Ruby weren't able to unmute. So could you, let's.
Can we finish this one first?
Yeah, no, I was going to say, Laura, we're going to finish this one first. And then if people had questions, the other group is still here and they can answer those. So uh, questions on this one, anybody? And I'll, I'll, I'll ask the people online one at a time. Richie, do you have any on this?
No, I think that, you know, like I said, the Parks Commission does a great job of that. They've shown they know how to get grants and and uh, you know, put some positive stuff on the ground. So yeah, I have, have no problem um, with anything they're doing as far as the, the other development. I'll just wait till I um, get back in town and sit down with Mike um, and, and, and do just a couple of questions. But either way, I'm good though. Thank you.
Uh, Ruby, how about you? Can, can you unmute her from where you are?
Yes, that mute on there.
Yeah, I know, Ruby.
Yeah, I did.
Can you hear us, Ruby? He's muted on her end. Lori, how about you?
Oh yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think this is a great idea and I had a question for Pat. So when we did the um, when you all did the R T P grants for Cochrane Mill Park, I think a part of that you actually um, purchased trail making equipment. And I wondered if that's built into this grant since this, this park is so far removed. Um, and you guys will, you know, be helping to maintain that trail going forward if that's built into it.
So, uh, oh, equipment?
Yeah.
Um, no, that's not built into this application. Um, we're hoping though, we're considering the rebuild as a very critical factor of our design uh, so that we can minimize the amount of maintenance that might be required.
And I know Daryl's been involved in those conversations. So I'm sure Lori, it's a good point. And I'm sure if Daryl thinks they need anything, we could look at adding that kind of thing in. They're not, I mean, they use.
I mean, this is trail building. I thought this particular grant would, I mean, they say something about not they pay for renting equipment to build the trail, but they don't pay for buying any equipment.
And the R T P that we use for the bridge also wasn't where we got the equipment. That was a different grant, Lori, and I'm trying to remember which one that was, but it was different.
Um, Pat, one more question. I think you had mentioned before who you had in mind to actually build the trail and it was different than who we've used before?
That, so that was really Roland. Um, so in the past, they worked with uh, the mountain bike group, right?
Right.
But I think we're going to, in this case, it may be more sophisticated trail building and we're going to have to actually have a contractor come in who's familiar with the materials and do it. And Roland's looking into that.
Great. Thank you.
Ruby, are you, are you there? Are you able to hear us?
I, I can hear you. I, I, I always could hear you, but I was just, for some reason, I don't know why it got locked up.
Okay. Or, or do you have any, uh, any questions about this park one?
No, no, great job. Thank you.
All right. And then just because uh, I, I was told that you might've been muted and, and had a question for the previous development, the hamlet one. Did, did you have a question about that?
No, not at this time.
Okay. All right. Great. Thanks, everybody. And you can uh, the next one, and thank you so much. Parks Commission, we. No, I mean, I, it's, it's awesome work and it's continually awesome work. So I just appreciate it. Uh, next one is uh, a small amendment to the short-term rental ordinance. Um, Camille, you're going to talk about that? Or Rick? Who?
You can go ahead and I can out.
This is an amendment to the uh, short-term rental uh, ordinance to make it clear that uh, if there's a waiting list uh, in an area and when a property may be sold, that the new owner would have to get on that list and that actually, actually be at the end of the list. Um, and also to make it clear that um, the city is not inspecting these uh, these units. So we just cleaned up a couple of the provisions in there. And then Camille and I were talking uh, before the work section began. The last sentence in that long kind of paragraph there where it talks about if converting a non-bedroom space to a bedroom. Uh, we don't um, regulate that. So we're going to ask if I'll ask if that sentence be struck.
And that, that's one of those things. And, and this is a point that Dana often brings up. If we're not actually regulating something, uh, it's almost impossible for them to track. We can't do anything about it anyway. So why have the language in there? And so this is a cleanup of that. It, it uh, comes about because a, a group of folks in, in Saranby that's been very focused on this short-term rental issue has been talking to Camille about it. And, and this is a change that really only impacts inside of Saranby, but it's it, it cleans up some of those issues.
It does. I think that, that language really was in the template we were using originally.
Correct.
Right. We were developing the ordinance. Okay.
Anybody have any questions about that or any other thoughts on that?
So the rules outside of uh, Saranby and the rural area. I mean, if people want to sign up and have their, their house used as an Airbnb, they can. I'm assuming that is, is the waiting list just for Saranby because of the amount of people that are, are doing that right now? Is that what that is?
Right now, we do have like one area, right?
Right. So yeah, anybody is eligible to do, to have a short-term rental. You know, there are certain rules that we have that limit the number. Um, and it hasn't been a problem in the rural areas. I do have a waiting list and I have three people on the waiting list and they're all in Saranby.
Okay. All righty, cool. I was just wondering, getting clarification on how all that worked. Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Richie. Anybody else? All right, uh, next is twenty-three dash oh five oh, which is a paving let, uh, Robbie.
No.
This will be the thing that's.
It's still a little too loud. Get all the way out here. I just want the people to be able to hear online. Stand by. One control will fix it. Okay, turn it down a little bit. So there we go. I'm not as funny as Daryl. But I'm taller. All right. So Mayor Council, you have uh, before you tonight is uh, the, the next week, we'll ask you to approve the, the next phase, uh, phase two of the T spots. Phase one, as you know, is going on right now. That's a micro-surfacing of many roads throughout the city. Phase two, we didn't get any bids uh, for the full depth like reclamation and repairs on Rico Road, which goes from South Fulton Parkway to Hutchinson Ferry. That needs more work as we know. So micro-surface that until you have work done on it. So we did a bid for that and we opened the bids uh, last week and it came in. See if I'm pulling it right and then there we go. Yeah, three, three hundred ninety-one thousand dollars was less than I was anticipating, which is good. Basically four hundred thousand dollars for the um, repairs on Rico Road. And that's going to include some, some striping, temporary striping, but it's what I want you to be aware of. And if you read further into the gender report, we're going to try to time this. I don't know if we're going to be able to do it, but as we're working on a micro-surfacing right now, you hopefully award this next week on October third. And depending on when they can mobilize, uh, I forgot to mention Piedmont Paving was the recommended bidder, was the only bidder. Um, so we recommend them. If they can time it to where they get it done in, in the same timeframe as the micro-surfacing, we can have the micro-surfacing folks skip on over and do that and just add a change order to do it. If it doesn't work out to that, we'll probably have to put another R F P out on the street to do the, do the uh, micro-surfacing on top of Rico and get that finished up. So what you're going to see is a bunch of pretty roads in the city. Then you're going to see Rico Road being, being repaired. And then eventually micro-surfacing and striping of Rico. But that's, that's our phase two that we are doing right now. But on, in one bid, it didn't work out that way because we didn't get any bids for Rico. And as you can tell, it was a harder one to get. We only got one this time. So we're very busy. These, these folks out there in the paving industry.
What, what do we think the timeline is?
For the, we're going to, this is the paving season. So micro-surfacing is, is happening. They're preparing it. They're, it only takes about a week to do the micro-surfacing. So I kind of want them not to do that right now. I wanted to go ahead and get this awarded on October third, October third, October fourth, issue notice to proceed. Let them hurry up and get out here. Piedmont Paving is, is uh, is being used in other areas in the area. So they're already mobilized and hopefully we can get them out there. So I don't know the, the timeline.
The other thing falls right after.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Anybody have any questions about that?
Nope.
If not, I think.
No.
This is you or Kevin uh, talking about the probation services?
I mean, yeah, I don't think, this is a, oh, sorry. You got a police vehicle.
Police vehicle. I'm sorry. Well, that is Kevin for sure. But, but if you, who's talking about the other one while you're up?
I can go ahead and talk about it real quick.
I don't mind taking one out of order.
We can do that. This is a work session. Um, this was then, and I, I like to keep the police and arms linked away from court ac- actions and activities they do too. But this is a probation contract. This is typical. We have to renew this. Um, it's a year contract, um, five-year extensions. We can extend year after year. We've been using the same probation company. Um, the only thing that they changed is the rates like forty dollars to forty-five dollars per person they supervise. However, there's no cost to the city. That's passed on to the probationer. So I just wanted to make that as a note that you knew that your costs go up. But we don't pay that cost.
Yeah. Great. Any questions about that? Kevin, uh, you want to talk to us about the car?
Yeah.
Mike, let's use his mic.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, this.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, for a Ford interceptor SUV. Um, it is budgeted. It was put in the, the budget for this year and this is just to, uh, replace some of our vehicles. Ten of our vehicles have over a hundred thousand miles. We have a couple when, assuming this one gets approved, I will be surplusing one that has two hundred and fifty thousand miles. So we're just, we're just replacing.
This is our ongoing two, one-year, one-
Correct.
the other year program, which, you know, as we're, as we're filling the police department all the way, may, may need to go to two and two.
Um,
we, we, you know, the, the issue we, we found early in the city's existence is that if you let them get too old, the maintenance costs are more than buying new ones. So it's just that issue. Anybody have any questions about this stuff? All right. And then, uh, the next one and last one is the one that Dana was talking about, about the schedule.
Right. But we do have the one we added, um, after.
Yes.
But I'll talk about the schedule.
The next one. Do you talk about the schedule?
Um, so as we discussed at the last work session, um, the, when we were making the schedule, we didn't know that early voting would be happening here at City Hall, which I'm really excited about that, by the way. Um, so we'll need to change that November second work session because early voting will be taking place in this room through the third. So we can't have access to the room.
And then if you recall, right, our, our regular meetings on Thursday, because the election's actually on Tuesday.
Yes. Our, the election is here at City Hall on November seventh. So we had, when we set the schedule, um, we changed the November council meeting to the ninth at six o'clock. Um, it's makes it definitely really tight. I don't know if you guys would want to try to do an earlier work session that day, like-
I mean, the one that we did in September worked okay, right? The, the early work session or at least then it's only one day in the month. But Troy, I mean, I recognize that's probably going to impact you more than anybody, right? So.
Well, I mean,
November ninth and maybe I think last time did we, I don't recall what time. I mean, maybe we could do it.
We started it too, right?
We could maybe do it like it. I don't know what the agenda is going to look like, but I don't know if we could do it at four.
We, we had more than enough time last time. Four would probably be plenty of time.
That's fine with me.
Does that work for you? Does that work for everybody that's on the, on the?
And we'll vote on it on Tu- Tuesday. So.
Ruby, maybe, maybe you can turn on your video and send smoke signals or?
Wow.
Well, no, her, I don't know what's going on, Richie. She, she, her thing is not muted.
Well, you got to press the bottom and unmute it because I, I, mine was muted, but Robbie had to unmute.
Here we go.
And he just did it again, Richie. So it was a problem. I couldn't do it myself. Thank you.
Oh, I, I know. I couldn't either. I hear you.
All right. So, so y'all enjoy that. Now, the, the, the question is, does that work for everybody if we have our work session at four o'clock on the ninth, followed by the council meeting, uh, again, to get around all the voting, uh, requirements?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. I didn't, I didn't hear Lori, but I'm going to assume that-
Yeah, it works.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll vote on it Tuesday anyway. So.
Well, yeah, anyway, I just, yeah, I don't like putting stuff up that people are not happy with. So uh, that is it for that. And then the next one is that one that we added, which is twenty-three dash oh five four, which is an interesting, uh, both an interesting study result and a recommendation from the chief based on that.
Uh, yeah. So like we spoke in the last, as we spoke in the last, uh, city council meeting, the last ordinance of the traffic issue that the charter school, one of the things that I said that we could do was do a traffic study, recharge the city. I've laid out, you guys have the, um, Blue Line Solutions, the packet, that's the company I talked about. You also have the, the results of the traffic study. And for, uh, Ricky, Lori and Ruby, I have copied that as well for you guys. Um, so we can be able to look at it before, uh, the meeting. But anyway, um, real quick, the results of the traffic study were uh, eye-opening to say the least.
By the way, this is, this is on Rivertown Road at the Charter School, right? So.
So if you look at the front page of it, you'll see there are three columns at the front page of the, the handout I gave you.
Oh, okay.
Um, can you speak into a microphone, please? We can't hear him.
Yeah. I think to Lori, I can't hear him either.
Uh, here, you want here, take this.
No.
Good. Now it's working.
One of them's working.
There we go.
All right. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay. So, uh, like, like I was saying, the, the, the traffic study was done, uh, by Blue Line Solutions. And on the handout that I gave you, you guys, on the first column, the traffic study was done between seven and nine, uh, when schools first getting in session. And then two to four, when school is letting out. They did do a separate one, nine to two at my request. And the reason for that is seven to nine and two to fours, when kids are being dropped off and picked up. Nine to two, I figure is probably residents. Of that, six thousand three hundred and thirty-two cars were found to be going through the school zone for the five-day study. Of the six thousand three hundred and thirty-two cars, four thousand eight hundred and thirty, four thousand eighty-three cars were doing at least eleven miles over the speed limit. Um, of those fourth, yeah, so about seventy-five percent of the cars that went through the, the school zone were speeding. Um, of those four thousand, about twenty-nine hundred, we're doing at least fifteen miles over the speed limit. So you're talking almost three thousand cars that were doing fifteen miles an hour or over the, uh, in a school zone. Comparatively between nine and two, only nine hundred cars and only thirty-five were speeding. So that tells me that the residents aren't the ones who are speeding. I mean, that's, it's, that's what the, the data is showing. So based on that and talking with Blue Line Solutions, we qualify for their program. Um, I am recommending that we go with them. There is no cost to the city. They, it is their equipment. They come, they put it up. They have to do um, an outreach. I do have, I have a meeting with Patrick Mohammed, the principal of the school on Wednesday because the school has to agree to it as well. I think I'm pretty sure he'll, he'll agree to it. I don't think he'll have an issue, especially when I show him that four thousand people are speeding in the school zone. Um, and, uh, so then he, he would have to agree with it. But anyway, uh, Blue Line Solutions, it's their equipment. They handle, they handle everything. We do have to change our speed permit, our, um, uh, from DOT, which they handle because our, our permit covers all our radar and lidar equipment. I just renewed that permit. But this is adding another one. So we have to redo the permit, which is just paperwork and me signing some things. It's, it's not that big of a deal. Um, so yeah, that's-
And, and to be clear, the suggestion is putting up a speed camera in the, in the school zone.
Correct. And flashing lights and signage. And again, when they first put it up by law, the first thirty days, no one gets a ticket. You get a warning. You get a warning sent to you saying, hey, starting on this day, if you do this again, you're going to get a ticket. Um, and then after, after the thirty days, you get a ticket and it goes to the owner of the vehicle. It, so it doesn't, so it's not taking pictures of drivers. It's just taking a picture of the license plate. Because by law it goes to the owner of the vehicle, not who's driving. Doesn't matter who's driving. So.
Kevin, you said something that kind of caught my ear there. I'm just, for clarification, the, the principal there has some type of jurisdictional uh, means of, of rejecting this or something if he didn't want it there, or is that just out of courtesy?
It's, it's more out of courtesy. Um, I mean, it's, it's, I, I don't think he, I don't think he has a jurisdiction to refuse it, but at the same time, if there, if there, if the school doesn't want it, um, I don't think Blue Line Solutions would do it.
Really?
Um, but I, I really, I've talked to Patrick Mohammed in the past and he's, he's open to something. And, and especially if, again, there's, there wouldn't be any cost to the school either to do this.
Right.
You know, this is, this is all their-
And, and the goal, the goal is not making a bunch of money. The goal is compliance. The goal is to not have people carrying-
Slow people down. And, and in fact, in the, um, booklet that I gave you, they have some statistics from other places where they implemented this and reduced traffic and reduced speeding by eighty-six, eh, eh, between sixty, eighty and even ninety percent in one area, which is the goal of, of this.
May I jump in to answer your question, Troy? There's, there's a series of regulations, uh, that the state imposes for having cameras in school zones. I can't tell you every one of them.
Right.
But one of them could be that the school has to approve. Um, I know when it's a, a public school or whatever, I think it takes the school board. Um, so I can look that up if you want.
Yeah.
Uh, but I just don't know it off the top of my head, but there's, there are several regulations that are in-
Right. And, and also part of this is the school superintendent has to sign off on this. Again, that won't be an issue because Blue Line Solutions is in South Fulton right now in Johns Creek. Uh, and they're about to, about to go into Fairburn. So that means the school superintendent has already signed off on those areas.
Okay.
So I don't see him signing off on, on ours either.
Well, no, that, that's the key. It's a Fulton County school. So it's, you know, they, they, yeah, I don't. So any, any questions from the folks online?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think, um, Principal Mohammed would be, uh, will accept it because I have been over there and I have seen reading the school bus, um, coming through there speeding.
That only happens one time.
Yeah.
Uh, Richie, uh, Lori, sorry.
No.
I've been, been an ongoing problem for years. If this will help slow it down and keep people safe. I mean, it's, those numbers are staggering. But not surprising.
No.
I think it's a great idea. Thank you for, uh, following up on that.
And so that's eleven, it, it's twenty miles an hour? Is that the?
So during school, during school hours, it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Okay. So folks were going forty miles an hour.
Yes. Yeah. O- over. There was, there was a couple. He, he showed me, it's not on here, but he showed, there were two that were doing ninety.
Oh, my gosh.
Gosh.
Chief, I can say this and, and this is not, um, uh, meaning to be caustic in any way, but I mean, towards you or anything, but, uh, I can tell you that, uh, the go-through traffic and most of our thoroughfares, just out of experience, uh, that this happened in the same percentage down Hutchinson Ferry.
Mm-hmm.
I guarantee you, and you know that.
Oh, yeah. And we, you know, we're, we're trying to address, one of my officers, I put it on our Instagram page last night. One of our officers got someone doing ninety on the, on the parkway.
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, good. All right. Any, any other questions about this? Uh, anybody got anything else for the good of the order while we're, while we're here?
No, I think I'm good.
Anybody on, anybody else?
I did.
If not, then we will see you all on Tuesday.
Oh, what about the work session, Tim?
Oh, there's more on here. Look at me all excited about leaving. Crossroad subdivision, uh, Ruby.
Okay. So, um, I wanted to bring Crossroad Subdivision up again back in September twenty twenty. Um, when I actually came into office, there was a lot of street signs down. And I had heard at the time that, you know, people were ripping them down. But I want to thank the staff for actually putting those street signs back up. Mainly it was off of Little Far, uh, Parkway and Ripley and Big, um, Bear, uh, Bear Court. So those signs are still there since twenty twenty. So I just want to think that, you know, that no one has taken them down. Um, the other thing is the front entrance of, um, uh, Crossroad, just trying to see if there's anything we can do. Um, I tried to get a grant um, to try to beautify the entrance, but the grant did not qualify. Um, the qualification for that grant did not fit the, uh, entrance. So still looking for grants to kind of help beautify the entrance. Also, I don't know what we can do about the trash. People are throwing trash out. Uh, I don't know if there's some kind of way we can put something, they are sign of trash for fine. But there's a, they'll come out and cut the grass or whatever, and people just throwing anything, the beer bottles, the cans or, or something like that out. Um, also on Little, uh, Far Parkway, there is a house that got burned down several years ago. The tree is actually coming out in the streets and the grass and stuff like that. I act, I'll send a picture, um, of that. So when people are driving through there, they're having to, you know, hit that grass and it don't want nothing to happen like an accident or anything like that. Um, the other thing, the, the resident has been asking like, and I know we don't have the money. Like I told them, when would some of the streets, um, get paved over there? Cause there are some streets where you got green grass coming out um, of the, um, of the streets. And, um, oh, the other thing where I know at one time we were talking about them cleaning up the area and stuff. So when a, two of the resident asked, what about one day having a big trash can or something like that, or buck that they can throw some of that, um, stuff that they have um, into that, um, dumpster or something like that. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. So, and then, I'm sorry, one other thing. Do we know who is actually paying for the lights, the street lights in Crossroad? Who's that responsibility? I knew at one time it was Fulton County. Are we aware of who actually pays for that? Because one of the things, um, uh, some of the resident was talking about the safety where they have seen drivers turn into that first interest into Crossroad because they, I guess like a Uber driver or something and it's late at night. So, um, they was just wondering about that as well.
So we're, we're paying for those street lights now. The city is. Uh, and I think there's, there's a couple of issues there to unpack, right? Typically a subdivision like that would have an HOA. They don't have one there. Uh, I know that things like entry beautification and stuff that, like that would normally be done by an HOA. I don't know, you know, there are special assessment things that you can do to maybe cover something like that. Paving, they're, they're city streets and they're on the schedule. They're just down the list on the schedule. Uh, because to, to your point, Ruby, there's not enough money for paving the main roads right now. Um, and some of the other things like the idea of doing a community cleanup, maybe bringing a dumpster and all of that are things that we should probably talk to Daryl about at some point and, and get scheduled because you want to support that kind of thing for sure. People want to clean the place up.
Well, and, and we've talked about getting a couple of dumpsters out there. We just, it just has not happened.
Right.
That's all. Uh, uh, I guess have a, have a co- amnesty day for the city, you know?
Well, we need to, right. That's the thing. We need to set the date up, right?
Yeah.
So Tom, Robbie has some, um, information maybe to share about that with the GFL, uh, phone call we had this last week.
Right. Right. Right.
Can't hear you.
Rick was just saying that, you know, the part of that entrance, since the, the roads were dedicated back when Fulton County permitted that, that subdivision.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the improvements would be in public right away. So we could figure out maybe a way to do some of that. And again, you have some ability to do special assessments too. So we, we might figure out a way to get around the fact that there's not an HOA by kind of setting up our own there for them.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Lori. Is that Lori?
That was me. Go ahead, Richie.
Oh, really?
Really?
Bobby.
Yeah. So we weren't sure. Was there a question there or was that just, uh, 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 an agreement or something?
No, I was just going to say, I'm going to send you the pictures of the, where the tree is coming out into the streets.
Yeah, perfect.
So that way, when those cars are going around, they don't have to, you know, try to dodge that from not, um, being able to drive on it.
We'll get that right to Daryl. That, that's good. And then you had something?
Yes. As far as, uh, GFL, uh, Lori touched on, touched on that. We had a call. Uh, as a result of the bidding process, um, you know, GFL didn't bid on it and they're like, oh, well, we didn't, we missed it. So I said, no problem. We, uh, we'd like to offer you an opportunity to have a non-exclusive contract with us. Non-exclusive means we're not going to make you use this, uh, which, what's in it for them? Well, what's in it for them is they can get better customers. They're going to have a dedicated customer service line to the city of Chattahoochee Hills. Also, we talked to them about trash amnesty days and they willing, they're willing to do that.
Oh, wow.
Also trash receptacles or portable ones when we have special events. So they're going to be a great partner. Got a government affairs manager now, which makes a big difference. So, you know, we can do that trash amnesty day. The, it's going to be, even though it's not exclusive, I said, I still need an agreement in place. I need our city attorney to review the terms and conditions and all that kind of stuff. So, um, but it's interesting that it's not exclusive. It's, but we, we still have an agreement in place and, and GFL is, is working hard. I, I saw, uh, a negative post about them and then underneath that was a positive post about them. I sent them the negative post. I said, look, this is what's happening out here. Um, didn't send them the positive one. I told them there was a positive one, but let's work on a negative one.
Yeah. Well, good. So that's another opportunity maybe to help in there. You know, it, it, it is absolutely the right thing to support a community effort like that if they want to clean up in the neighborhood. So let's, let's make that happen.
Yeah.
All right. And then uh, Lori, you had a, a, uh, issue that uh, we've talked about before too. Uh, about the uh, reads on zoning things. You wanna talk about that? I know that the people here. Have the thing that you asked me printed, Ruby and, and Richie won't have that, obviously.
Uh, yeah. So there'd been some requests made recently to slow down development. And maybe take some additional time reviewing development applications. As you know, our charter currently requires two reads. Um, I thought I remembered that our initial charter required three re- reads. And that was changed by the first council. However, I think I'm probably mistaken because I went back to look for that and I asked Dana and we couldn't find any record of that. Anyway, that prompted me to kind of consider the root problem and, and maybe research how other cities have addressed it. And I think there's a couple of factors that contribute to the problem. Um, first one is it, it often takes time to review and understand. The specific zoning and the intent of the comp plan as it applies to the specific applications we're reviewing. So that takes time. The second issue is. Residents currently don't have the opportunity to discuss issues as a group. Since our public hearings limit them to making individual comments. And then it's a one-way conversation. The council or the planning commission cannot, or, or is not supposed to respond during comment sections. So I, I look to see, you know, how, how other cities were addressing these. Um, of course, one possible solution is. To change um, our charter from two reads to three reads. And with that solution, it get, does give council more time to understand the zoning and application. But I think it's sort of an inefficient use of our time. Since the council can't meet with more than, um, the staff can't meet with more than two council members at a time. And really it doesn't address the residence opportunity to discuss or learn about the application or its process. But then I found this other um. Other city of Vera Beach, Florida had in their land development regulations. An option called um, neighborhood workshops. And this was an option. It wasn't always required or mandatory. But maybe using a neighborhood workshop, it could provide residents. The opportunity to learn about significant developments, ask questions from the applicant. The staff, the city attorney, council and planning commissions, and also to voice their concerns. And if this was offered as a public meeting, all the council and planning commission members could also attend. And hear the legal aspects of the application from our attorney. I think that's kind of important because that's one thing we've been saying as a council. The way we do it now, we're not all hearing the same information at the same time. And um, so if it was done after a first read, but before the planning commission meeting. The commission and the council could be better equipped to understand the concerns of the applicant and the residents. And also the legal issues. And I think that would help us make um, a more armed. And also engage the community. Cause I think we're really getting, now that we have these large developments coming. More residents are interested in wanting to know more information about it. So, uh, uh, as a recommendation, i- if the council sort of likes this idea. Um, maybe we could spend, or the council could spend time at its twenty twenty four planning retreat. And sort of flush the idea out with staff and the planning commission. Sort of figure out when to offer neighborhood workshops. Maybe it's just for. New misuse developments or expansions of existing ones. Um, should the workshops be more like town hall meetings? So all residents could attend, or should they just be. Specific to the area where the developments are going in. And if they're optional, who decides when one is needed? Uh, maybe that's something staff does after the first read or the council decides. So that was just some sort of ideas I wanted to um, bring before the council and, and ask if. They thought anything like this might benefit them and the residents.
I think, you know, it's funny, we were just talking to the two applicants that came in about that. I think. Smart developers want to have those community meetings anyway, so it's not a bad idea for sure.
Can I say this? Um. You know, for, you know, Lori touching on what you said, yeah, that, that whole. Process in my opinion does need to be addressed and, and talked about and, and definitely tightened up. You know, one, one thing I've said for years, and I've been very confused. Why we have to have one meeting with, with Mike and, and developer and then two more council people go in there and then two other ones. What is wrong with a developer coming to our city? Walking in there, cause both those gentlemen said, hey, I've been working with uh, I think one lady said a year, another one, two years. So these conversations have been going on. Um, that process, when these conversations start, I don't know why we're not informed of it right then. Hey, this is, this is what Mike's looking at. This is uh, something that may fit, may look really, really good. I think it should go to planning uh, and zone uh, what do you call it? Um. Planning guys first. Let them look at it after Mike looks at it. Give their recommendations. That way, when, when the council has the document. They not, not only have what the developer brought, but they have what the planning commission sees right there. Now, now we've got all the information in front of us to have a discussion. And if we need to change something and send it back to planning and zoning, we can. It's just uh, th- th- this, this whole. You want to inform the whole town, you know, we have a, we have a paper. You know, this stuff should be put in, put in our paper. Hey, this development's being talked at city hall. If you're interested, this is the date. I think those avenues are available. I just question whether or not we use them correctly. That's all. But yeah, the process uh, it, it needs to be set up in, in a fashion which definitely notifies. Everyone in our town seems to be interested. Not, I, I think uh, not just certain areas, just about developments. But yeah, I would like to sit down maybe next month and iron that out. I don't see why that has to be a spring flame thing. I think the quicker something like that gets squared away and communication gets to the people. I think that, that moves right on up the list. That's all I got. Thank you.
That's good, Ruby.
I'm good. Thank you.
Right. You have any thoughts?
That holds a lot of merit and a lot of weight. Uh, I mean, as much as we can contribute to a deliberative process and a much more transparent process. And, and get a grow, you know, at least uh, a, a lot more involvement with, with a lar- larger number of people. Um, and then that process does slow down slightly, at least some. All of this is a. A huge impact on the community now. We can't, I mean, we all know we can't have Mayberry forever. I mean, we get that. We understand that. But uh, my whole. Uh, anything that I would have to say negative about this process would be about uh. Uh, it not being a little more transparent and more forthcoming. I know I have been reached out to several times to have so- several of those meetings, but I would like to see. Uh, the developers come before us in a, in a manner that they're just coming before the body. Uh, at that point in time. I don't know what type of flags that might throw up at certain points of it, but I can't see where it would be negative in any shape. I am, you know, form or fashion. Uh, at least the city. Uh, is uh, in, in an open forum would, would have that. And we're not just getting bits and pieces and hearing this, that and the other. And then all of a sudden we're presented with a, a finished product uh, and not really have the time to, to uh. Mold it over and even get the word out many times to the people. So the process is um. Is, is, is the point. I do like the entirety of the ideas that's been put forth uh, here. And I think something we need to work on and have a, a candid discussion about. So. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm all wait. Yeah, there you go. Good. Um, thanks Lori. Uh, you know, I like the option number two about the neighborhood workshops because I think deep. There are five of us and there are three thousand people out there. And I feel like. We have an opportunity to ask some questions behind the scenes when we need to, to clarify. But I think it's where the public and the two-way conversation that could happen in the public meetings is what the most valuable piece of this would be. And if we don't limit it, depending on how, when we discuss it, um, maybe it involves the whole city. Maybe, you know. Come one, come all. I'm not sure. Um, we've had enough room in the past for a general town hall. So maybe that fits. But I, I just think that, and it's a really good idea, I think, to then, you know, I'm not sure we will require that in our application process. Right? Like you must complete at least one.
I think, I mean, there are a lot of models out there where that is a requirement, right? And so we can put together some information on different models that people use for this sort of thing. Um, you know, whether it should be neighborhood or whole city, or maybe there's some of both, right? Because the people most impacted probably have the most say about it. And then general information's important too. But we'll put together some, because again, this is not just something that one or two cities have done. There are a lot of different ways to do this. We recommend this. We don't require it. We can absolutely require it, right? They're, they're, for sure. And it's not a bad idea because it is easier than dealing with a ground swell that happens in a compressed time, right? When people can have some more opportunity to ask questions and, and digest and all of that. So I, I think it's a great idea.
It's um, I'm sorry, um, you asked me about that. Um, I do think it's important and Lori, thank you for bringing it up. Because it's important that the citizen voice be heard.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Well, a- and also too, it's important that people understand the process. Your average citizen has no idea what the process is. On a lot of this stuff that, that can be very easily simplified through communication. And through uh, like, like Tori said, even what Camille said, you know, when, when, when somebody hear, hears a, a hotel going up, that, that wakes up everybody's ears. Now, o- over in my district, you know, I'll give you a perfect example. When Rod started doing that orchard four or five years ago. Granted, it fit what Mike uh, and what we were doing. I had no idea. I got hammered with twenty five calls once I saw the D eights pushing in the road. You know, a- and I, and I think too, one thing that can help out a lot, you know, communication from city hall. Going directly to council, council people. And say, listen, hey, this, this development fits what we're doing, or this project, whatever it is, it's fixing to take place in your district. And I need to give you some information. Cause we all realize that some things get passed at city hall because it fits. Not everything winds up in our book. So that, that's, that's simple heads up, um, which I just call common courtesy. I, I think that would go a long way also.
And, and you know, the, the balancing point too is ten people come in and ask questions for everyone that ever ends up filing something. And, you know, we talk about. Those things too, and, and just working out process for that. I think the idea of a meeting where everybody's actually there. And everybody hears all the stuff is really important because part of the thing right now is.
Yeah, I, I think it's important that, that, that the council and everybody hears it all at the same time.
Yeah, no.
Everybody hearing the same conversation.
Not, not disagreeing.
I, I believe the Zoom meetings are adding to that. I mean, a lot of people are watching.
Because you're watching, yeah.
That's right.
Yeah. Well, good. All right. We'll put some stuff together. Uh, staff will put some stuff together on what some of those different possibilities will look like, run it by the city attorney. Cause I don't want him frowning when we're talking about these things and, and we'll, we'll make sure that we come up with something that's both. You know, workable, legally appropriate and gets more information out. Uh, because again, I think the process is often more thoughtful than people think it is. And if more people saw that, it'd probably feel better.
Once an application comes in for rezoning, the, the ZPA kicks in. State law kicks in, and that's what drives the, the timing. And I know that, that compresses whatever, but, but that's, that's a state law.
And what we're talking about really is pre-process, right? Like getting everybody ready for the state process to start. And, and I think to your point, right? There is state law around this. Most of what we do is just following state law. Cause we have to. Uh, but there's pre-process that we can do that might make things a little more transparent and easier for folks. So.
Right. Where did you say that trigger was now? Like that?
It's once um, the application gets in and we, we put the um, the notices in the, in the paper.
Okay.
Then we're, we're governed by, we've got to do the meetings within a certain window of time. Um, but you can do all the, before the advertisement starts and, and the formal process starts. You could require an informal meeting if you wanted to do that. You could also, I was also thinking some, some rezonings are really simple. You know, it's not really something that gets a lot of concern or whatnot, but then some of them. Really do get a lot of concern. So maybe there's a way to, to differentiate. So you're not requiring every single rezoning. I don't know, just something to think.
But there, there are examples out there, right? Towns do this kind of thing. And, and, you know, we've talked about some of those examples. We've talked about some of those examples. So. It's, it's something that we can put several up forward and say, look, what makes sense for this town? Given what we've got going on, right? And pick whatever makes everybody feel better about the process. Within the legal bounds.
Okay.
Well, no, I mean, right. We can't break the law either, or at least I'm not willing to. So. Uh, good. So we'll put that together and, and hopefully we can talk about that next month. Um, I, I agree. There's no, there's no reason to wait until the retreat. Um, we'll see what the schedules look like, right? But, but yeah, we'll get right on that. Uh, any other thoughts? Anybody else?
Nope.
Because then I'm back to where I was about a half hour ago saying, we'll see you Tuesday. Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
There you go. All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.